It's called the Simsbury Board of Education, February 27th, 2018. Meeting, glad you're all here. We have some nice faces in the audience, thank you. Anyone have anything they'd like to say? Public audience is available now. Okay. We'll go on to Committee and Board Administration Communications with Isabel Dorman.
All right. Hi, everyone. At Central School, students celebrated Kindness Week this week. Perfect. Each day, members of the Student Council asked students to demonstrate an act of kindness. Some of the days that were celebrated were Compliments Day, Checklist of Kind Things to Do and Say Day, Be Kind to Teachers Day, and Caught Being Kind Day. For students at Latimer Lane, Friday, March 2nd is one of the most anticipated days of the year, Bingo Night. The event is a fantastic community celebration that runs from 6:30 to 8:00, and the school is expecting a large crowd of people to attend. This Thursday, Simsbury High School's Unified Theater will be hosting its annual performance at 5:00 o'clock. This year's theme is "The Time of Our Lives." Bring family and friends. You won't want to miss this year's show. And as a member of Unified Theater, I can attest to the hard work of each of the performers, and I'm really excited to, and everyone else is excited to present what we have been working on, so please come and support. This Friday as well, at the high school, from 7:30 to 10:30, the Trojan Wall will be hosting its annual Winter Wonderland Dance, which I'm also really excited about. And then finally, Battle of the Bands from this past Friday went amazingly, so congratulations to the five student bands and the staff band, including last semester's student representative, Dylan Fitch, who was amazing. He got all dressed up in like this space suit, and he was really into it. And his band, Funky Fitch and the Space Whale, won first place, so congrats to all of them again.
Thank you very much. That's a very full report. Simsbury High School seems very busy. Tom?
Yes.
Jen?
Nothing's not good.
I'm good, thanks. Moving on to Ms. Lynn.
Two things. So on March 14th, Simsbury Public Schools is cosponsoring with the Connecticut Special Education Parent Teacher Organization, or CASEPTO, Special Ed Day on Capitol Hill. And we have a number of students that are going to come and present the great work that we're doing among members of the greater Simsbury community, and it's just a very positive day of advocacy. So that's going to be held from 10 to 12, and welcome any board members to that. You can see me for additional details. And also, Community of Care is going to be sponsoring a program that evening at 6:00 o'clock at the Simsbury Library around the concerns of vaping. And we have our SROs that are going to be joining some members of the Social Services in Simsbury to present on that topic, and certainly all are welcome.
What's the date of that one, please?
March 14th.
And what time is it again?
6:00 o'clock at the Simsbury Public Library Program Room.
That's the Community of Care presentation?
Yes, it is.
That's it. Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
So our last meeting with the board was on February 13th, and obviously on the next day, on February 14th, with the events in Parkland, Florida, the world of schools really shifted, and there's been a major focus around safety concerns. And tonight, Mr. Curtis has asked me to take just a few minutes to talk a little bit about some of the things that certainly want to address the issue at Simsbury High School from last Thursday, and then talk to you just about some of the things that we have been paying attention to and refocused on since that time. So, you know, not only for you, but hopefully for the people that are watching, to put some minds at ease as well. Certainly, I think most of you know that last Thursday, there was a generalized threat that students had seen on Facebook to an act of potential violence to an unnamed SHS, and it was not in any way directly connected to our school, but kids were scared. And most importantly, they came to school and said something to adults. And that was the key to us going into action. I got calls almost simultaneously from Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Curtis, and the team at the high school immediately went into action, pulled the emergency team together, decided to go into a modified lockout procedure, which is not a lockdown where you go into your classrooms, locks, lights out of sight, but a lockdown where you secure the perimeter of the building. And it was the right call, and it took a little bit of time into mid-morning until the Simsbury Police were able to clear the threat. The cooperation of police, the team at the high school, really the students and staff was exactly what you would want in reaction to that. And the communications went quickly, and really, I felt like in a moment of heightened awareness, we did really well. What I want people to be aware of also are some of the other things that have happened in the last couple of weeks. I had talked to you a couple of months ago that we, prior to this, had hired a consultant to come in and look at two of our schools, Simsbury High School and Squadron Line School, to do full-day assessments around security at those schools. I am pleased to say that we just received back his comprehensive reports. So we have a lot of stuff to act upon, based on his, there's a ton of compliments in there about what we're already doing. And quite frankly, most of his recommendations are not around further hardwiring of the building or doors or locks, but they're around the way that people can improve their awareness of their surroundings and the way that they're surveilling the building. And so it's probably not so much going to involve costs as much as it is training to help adults and kids become more aware, and we'll be following through on those recommendations from our consultant. The other thing that is going to be in the training mode, we had done a level of training with our Administrative Council around active shooter training. We had done some emergency management trainings, and also now that we have these recommendations from Don Shomet, we are going to be pulling together each of, not out to full faculties yet, but we're going to pull, each of our schools has a school safety team, about half a dozen people that are the key safety experts in that building. It typically involves the, at an elementary level, for instance, a principal, a head custodian, a school nurse, a lead secretary, a school psychologist, and a key teacher in the building, who become the main part of that safety team. Our training's going to go out to that next layer, and also make it just a Q and A for the day of what is on people's minds. So that is, that'll be coming up in April as we pull those teams together. We have also been exploring, the middle school started with the exploration of, a number of community members have contacted us about something called the Say Something Program. It's actually in the wake of the Sandy Hook, it's from, it's from an organization that's known as Sandy Hook Promise. And we had, the middle school had looked at this, which really is a program encouraging students to do exactly what our students at Simsbury High did last week, to say something when you have concerns. It's not only around violence, but if you have concerns around a depressed student, to make sure you're saying something about mental health issues in your school if you're worried about somebody. It's a very formalized program that the folks in Newtown kind of put together, got some funding taken to a regional and even national level, and that's a program that, we're going to bring somebody in from the organization as, based on what the middle school has been doing in looking at that program. And then lastly, you know that your capital improvement plan included $850,000 request for security improvements. We're working with Mr. Leclerc's office to say exactly what would go on that list if that amount was to be approved by the town later this spring. And one of the things we need to do is, with really principals and head custodians, make sure that, you know, we know we have some issues in our buildings, that we've made massive improvements, but there's some little things that still need to get done in each building. And that's the list we're really looking to collect again in a systematic way, and make sure that if this funding comes through, we can address some of those small issues that could only improve what our security efforts are. So it has, you know, we've had a lot of communication from people outside, we have a lot of communication from people from the schools. I will end this by saying, you know, in a test last Thursday, we did well, and I hope this couple of minutes lets people know how seriously we're taking this stuff all the time.
Neil, I would add one thing. Thursday morning, Neil and I are meeting with our PTO President's Group, and we'll provide a similar kind of update, give them an opportunity to ask some questions or things that are on their mind, or give us some opinions of conversations that may be going on in their school community that will give us, you know, further insights into how people are feeling.
Does the consultant just base his report on observation, or did he interview personnel as well?
Interviewed dozens of people all day long, from parents to staff, to sat down at the lunch tables with the kids, spent literally the, you could see, and he took hundreds of pictures throughout his days. The pictures, you could literally see them in the dark at 5:30 in the morning, all the way to, he went dark, dusk to dawn to dusk, and, you know, had hundreds of pictures and recommendations, pictures and some recommendations to offer to us. And it's a lot to absorb, we're already absorbing it and ready to kind of move into the training aspect of it.
Is this the same consultant we used last time?
No, different person.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Back in January, I gave a presentation on the vision of the graduate. So this Thursday, we're bringing our district leadership team together, a much larger group of educators from around the district, and starting them in the work around the vision of the graduate. So we're looking forward to that. And on March 26th, Monday, is a full-day PD day. It's going to be our annual technology conference. I met with John C. L. I. Twinnick today, and it looks like it's going to be an extremely engaging opportunity for teachers, and we have a number of teachers that are going to be presenting on that day as well. So we look forward to that full day of professional development around technology.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Mr. Curtis?
I would just add that last night, Maria presented her budget to the Board of Selectmen, and she had, we had had some good communication before, and I know that she's going to be a great partner collaborating moving forward. I think the two budgets combined from her summary and how it was presented would lead to a mil rate decrease of 2.2 mils. So I mean, I just think in terms of moving forward to our presentation in a few weeks with the Board of Finance, I think we're in a positive place to start our conversations. And my hope again is we can focus a bit of our time on the capital projects that we have as well. We did have another meeting with the town staff in looking at that overall five-year, six-year plan, looking at their six-year plan, and we are going to have to juggle some projects around to fit within that 6.7 or 7%, so we'll be coming back to the board with that information at a later date.
Questions? Thank you very much. Thank you all for your good reporting. Thanks, Isabel. It's a lot to say. We've got a lot of sports teams doing things as well. We've had a lot of good, positive sports activities as well. I don't know them, so I can't tell you them, but I know they're going on. Basketball, swimming.
Yeah.
I know it's good.
Basketball on both sides is really good.
Yeah, boys and basketball.
We have girls tomorrow playing Glastonbury at home. I believe boys playing Windsor tonight at Buckley High School in semifinals of the CCC.
And our diving is tonight, and our swimming is tomorrow night.
It's tomorrow night.
Yep. Doing very well.
Excellent. I'm sure hockey's somewhere. Hockey was last night. Their last game was last night. Anyway, moving on. We have the, we can go into the approval of minutes. The February 13th meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstain? And we are then going on to a gift to Simsbury Public Schools, the Simsbury High School Trojan Bust. Is that Mr. Leclerc?
That is. Yes, I'm going to start it off and then turn it over to Andy and his team here tonight. So this is a, this is a project for a Trojan bust, a bronze bust, as you see a sample of here, that would be placed outside of the main entrance, mounted on a brick type of base. And obviously, the goal being to promote our school mascot and school spirit. And some of the larger group donations came from the class of 2018, the SPTC, class of 1987, and the Student Council. In addition to that, we've had 41 other individuals who have either donated or given us pledges, so we're asking for acceptance of a total of up to $8,500. But this project had a special start, and I wanted to let Andy and his group give you a little bit of background on that.
So good evening. I'm here with Jim Martocchio, who's Mr. Bachelor's former colleagues, and also Brendan McDermott, who was one of Mr. Bachelor's students. This represents the realization of a dream that Mr. Bachelor had when he was a class co-advisor with Mr. Betty. He always had wanted to have, he envisioned having this Trojan bust in a place where athletes could go by and smack it and get inspired like they're in to go and compete and hit the field, and they researched it, but when they looked at it at that time, they thought, well, no, this probably could never happen. And they didn't pursue it any further, but Mr. Betty actually kept the document. So after Mr. Bachelor had passed, and we were trying to think of fitting ways to remember him or paying tribute, et cetera, this was something that Mr. Betty brought out and said, hey, you know, I have this Trojan bust. So I was then looking for people that would volunteer, and that's when Mr. Martocchio and Brendan came out of the woodwork and rallied around helping to make this a reality. You guys want to just take a minute and talk a little bit about some of the conversations that were had?
Sure, yeah.
Steps that were taken?
Hi, I'm Jim Martocchio, for those that aren't known. I was very close with Mr. Bachelor Clark, who passed away recently, and this was one of his sort of, one of his projects that he always really wanted. And it's funny, because when we were talking to his wife, Barb, we were like, Barb, do you remember Clark ever talking about this Trojan bust that he wanted? And she was like, oh, my gosh, he talked about it all the time. We never stopped. So we kind of wanted to clear it with her before we kind of moved any further with it, and getting that sort of spirit from her just really led the charge. And I have Brendan in class, and the two of us got to talking about it, and we decided that this would not only be a fitting thing for, sort of help remember Clark, but it's such a great spirit piece that could really do, be just a great focal point anywhere you put it in the school. And that was actually part of the hardest part, was figuring out where do we put this beautiful sculpture? And, you know, so we've been working all together to come up with some cool ideas for that. And the other cool thing too about it is that, so the artist that designs these and makes them is actually from Alaska, which Clark actually spent tons of time in as a member of the Coast Guard out there, and he always speaks very highly of Alaska. And I don't even think he knew that that's where this was from, because this is the original piece that he had sent out to some of his colleagues. So when Brent dug it up and gave it to us, and we ended up having to go through and try to find out where the heck did he find this? And it turns out that this guy was in Alaska, and they've been great. So that's sort of a little background on it, and now we're just trying to iron out some of the details, but that's, it's a great picture of what it looked like.
Brendan, you've done some work around organizing funds, et cetera?
Yeah, definitely. So one of the big aspects, I think, of this gift is not only honoring Mr. Bachelor's legacy, but also giving back to the school community. And I think that, you know, as President of the class of 2018, one of the things that we wanted to set forth and set a precedent for was really giving back to the school, because not a lot of, you know, classes, you know, have really given something, especially to this magnitude, to the school. So, you know, as my role as part of this, we really want to, you know, set the precedent so that, you know, the classes that follow us, you know, will be motivated to kind of give back to the school and, you know, you know, hopefully do something, you know, along the lines of this, or however it may manifest itself. So I'm just, you know, really proud, you know, to have worked, to have worked on this with Mr. Martocchio and Mr. Leclerc.
Excellent.
I think there might be, is there one more image that shows the potential location? So we have identified outside of the front steps when you approach the building. So if your back is to the field and you're facing the front door, to the left of that, we were going to have constructed a brick pillar that would match the other brickwork that's there, and kind of camped it at a 45-degree angle. So as you drive in or walk in and approach, you'll be facing, you know, this Trojan bust. And it's also kind of set up so that if people did want to, you know, come and, as Mr. Bachelor envisioned, give it a high five, or even have teams or groups pose around this, it would be pretty cool.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
So we'd ask for word's acceptance.
We must accept this. What a wonderful community effort, and I love that everybody's participating in it. It's very nice.
Very much appreciated.
And Brendan, thank you so much for all your work in gathering your troops as well.
Thank you.
So I would move that we accept this with a lot of appreciation and fond memories of Mr. Bachelor and all he did for all his students.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And please let Mrs. Bachelor know that we think of her often, and we're very happy to have this as a tribute to him in our schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for coming out. Very much appreciate it.
Excellent. That's wonderful.
Way to start.
And now we're coming to, we need to make a motion to, we need to, wait, where are we? Oh, we're not doing that yet. Sorry, I'm running ahead. We're getting to the non-public school budget. We've all looked at it, we've talked about it. Does anyone have any thoughts, questions, or concerns that they want to bring up? And I would entertain a motion to accept it?
I'll move that the Board of Education adopt the 2018-19 non-public school budget in the amount of $543,490, which represents a decrease of $776 or minus 0.14%.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. So we have passed the non-public school budget. We're going to move on to the adoption of our public school budget. We've been working on that all winter, and we had a great presentation last week, very fully discussed. Does anyone have any thoughts, concerns? I'd love to hear what everyone thinks about our budget for the going year, and if anyone has any questions, now is a great time to bring them up. Tom?
I have no questions, but I do just want to comment for the benefit of the public that might be watching this broadcast, that I've been on this board for, I think, three years now, two and a half years. And once again, I was very, very impressed with the rigor involved in the preparation of this budget, the rigor involved in the board's review of this budget. We're going to vote on it now with, probably with very little discussion, but I want to make sure the public understands that a great deal of work has gone into the study and the analysis of this budget. And I also just want to comment that facing a difficult situation where we had to make economies, I was, for one, was very impressed with the discipline that the district team applied to this budget in order to find economies, but to not in any way compromise the quality of education in the system. And I just want to compliment, I just want to make that comment.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Jen?
Good.
I mean, I agree with everything Tom says. I think that everyone did a fantastic job. I know it's a lot of hard work, and, you know, I think it's good to point out that we'll just kind of vote today, but it's been months of hard work by everybody, especially the team here, and it's much appreciated, and I think it's a great result.
I really did appreciate kind of the unique views you guys took and the exercises you went through to get at every line item from every angle. And while I was not at the last meeting, I was at the workshop, and I watched the last meeting and saw the presentation. And I think it's, the slide that always sticks with me is how many years we're running on these 1% budgets, and we're still getting the accolades, and we're still giving our students what they need to be successful. And I think that that is such a testament to the school system we've all built together, but I think that that really says so much about what we do for these kids and how we try to keep the cuts from hitting them where it could harm that result. So, yeah, that's really all I have to say.
Excellent. I think, again, we're all saying the same thing, but it's, we weren't saying the same thing along the way. We had a lot of questions, we had a lot of concerns, we were thinking, everyone in this room has brought their concerns. No one wants to make the cuts we've had to make, but I think that this is a solid effort to meet our Board of Finance's request, and to work within that framework, and everyone did a wonderful job. And I too am very thankful for how this all came together, and all the work that everybody at this table and in this room have put forward. And all the principals in their schools
Did a nice job.
Did a great job this year, and we're very helpful to get to where we need to be. Saying that, I would entertain a motion.
Sure, I'll move that the Board of Education adopt the 2018-19 public school budget in the amount of $69,314,552, which represents an increase of $1,189,382 or 1.75%.
Second best motion.
Thank you. Tom? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? The motion carries. We have passed this year's budget. We will move on to working with our town and Board of Finance.
Yes.
And taking it to the next phase. Moving on, due to the Board of Education's budget presentation, as we were just speaking of, to the Board of Finance, on March 13th, we will need to cancel that Board of Education meeting, and I need a motion to do so, please.
So move.
Second?
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So on March 13th, we will not have a Board of Education meeting, but we will have a Board of Finance meeting. So we hope to see everyone there. Our next report, it's very nice to see Neil and Jan, Mrs. Sands.
We took it on the road.
And we are going to, that was really big, jumping on.
They're a good team.
So Teacher Evaluation and Mentoring Program, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I told Jan I would join her at the table, so hopefully you can get the juxtaposition here, but
I'm not sure what the juxtaposition is.
That'll be fun to watch on call.
Analyze that as you speak.
Your better side. So this is basically a presentation about how we formally support first and second year teachers really into the profession, not just first and second year teachers into Simsbury, but it is, TEAM is a program developed by the state, and Connecticut, quite frankly, has been a leader in teacher induction for quite some time. And the TEAM, if you read nationally about teacher induction, Connecticut gets a lot of kudos for the strength of the TEAM program. I'll talk a little bit about Jan's involvement in that. Jan, right now, is our district facilitator from TEAM. She comes to that work as a true expert at the state level from the previous version of this. Some of you who know education may remember the BEST program, which was how we supported new teachers, you know, in the 90s and 2000s really, which was a very portfolio-based program. Jan actually, mid-career, took a few years' leave from Simsbury and had a job as a consultant at the state, which it was, we lent her, she was not permanently, but we allowed her to have that experience as a leader for the BEST program, and was a major player in the switch over to TEAM at the state level as that happened. So when she came back to Simsbury after her stint there was over, it's important to understand that our district committed, part of her teaching schedule is actually committed to being our district facilitator for TEAM. It's that important to us, and we put somebody really as a leader in it, and that's how Jan serves in that role now. Our presentation tonight is give you just a little bit of background about what TEAM is, let Jan talk to you about what we do in Simsbury, but specifically to talk about some very sudden and unexpected changes that came from the state and how those are impacting districts and sort of how Simsbury has reacted to that. So as you can see, the first few slides are just to give you the background of what TEAM is, and it is a two-year induction program that involves those new teachers paired with a mentor through a very structured set of activities that are professional development to get you kind of up to speed and build your expertise as you enter into a very challenging profession. Much of that involves not only work with the new teachers, but training the mentors, making sure that they are ready to take on that leadership role with the new teachers and learn the system of how they are expected to work through the plans that the teachers develop to support their growth. First and second year teachers must complete this process in order to move from the certification when you first come out of college and get certified. You get an initial educator's certificate that's only good for a few years, and you have to move into what they call provisional educator's certificate, and you can't move to that next level of certification unless you've completed TEAM. And the superintendent has to certify that people have done that before they can move on. And it's all based on five modules that are aligned to the teaching standards for the state of Connecticut. So this next slide sort of shows you how the domains of the Connecticut teaching standards turn into modules for TEAM. So the first major domain of content and essential teaching skills are kind of embedded in all the modules, and then teachers have gone through four And then teachers have gone through, four of the modules involve a cycle of reflection papers that they write. In Simsbury, our first year teachers do two. They do classroom environment and then planning in the order that's presented on the slide. And then second year teachers do instruction and assessment. So it's two cycles in each of the first two years. Module five is, or module five, domain six, is another, more of a one-shot program where it's this really interesting facilitated discussion that Jan and her other master mentors run, which is problem solving and just ethics questions with teachers. And it's this three-hour session that usually our mentor teachers who come, come back and say, that was more interesting for them, because they start to wrestle with some questions that they maybe haven't wrestled with in a little while. So the process in those modules that do involve a reflection paper, it starts in the upper left-hand corner, they identify a need in that particular module. So let's take the first one is learning environment. Often a teacher will identify something I need, and for a first year teacher, that's often the normal routines and norms of a classroom. How do I settle my class in for the day? How do I get started? How do I maybe run a morning meeting or just take attendance and seating arrangements in my class? What does all of that look like as kids? You identify that that's the area you want to grow in. You develop an action plan that usually involves doing some reading and research, going out and watching other teachers, meeting with your mentor to talk about how it's going and problem solving around a very specific growth area that you've identified. Implementing that plan and reflecting upon it, and then ultimately writing a paper that gets, that in the previous iteration was submitted into a queue in the state that then got looked at, almost always approved, but if not, you had a chance to redo the module. And just a cycle of growth that was really well structured and well done. Much improved over the portfolio program that existed before, which was this really stressful, very large thing that happened in year two. And often-
Big video, I remember the big video.
Yeah. Teachers felt very overwhelmed.
Still wearing those scars.
So that's the module process. It, again, there's some changes to that that's happened, but Jan's going to talk you through how we've done, what our Simsbury philosophy of this is and some of the things we've done over many years.
As a, the chief cheerleader for the town of Simsbury, a role I think I carried pretty well. I think one of the things we do really well here is support our new teachers. And when we were moving from BEST to TEAM, and a group of us sat and said, well, what is it that we want to offer to our new teachers? And first and foremost, we wanted to make people feel part of something bigger than themselves. We wanted to establish relationships. That matters a lot to me. And I think that if you establish relationships, people will do anything for you and walk through water with you. And we wanted them to do those accompanied by a mentor, someone who was actually assigned to you. You didn't have to go through the hall crying to find someone. Not that there wouldn't be multiple people available, but there was one person in particular, and this has always been very important to me as a, since the time I was a new teacher here, that there were always people to whom I could turn for academic support, for personal support. They planned my wedding, they did everything in my whole life that I think that has happened. My colleagues have planned for me. But where to go when it's all seems lost, to celebrate the successes with? We felt that if people felt that connection and those relationships were built, that these new educators that were hired here would want to stay. We, I think that one of the reasons Simsbury has such an excellent system is because people have stayed over my career. There has been a consistency that has really made a difference in kids' lives. So that was one of our first missions, to make sure that people felt supported with not only their mentors, but a bigger group. Secondly, we wanted to make sure that these mentors had the skills that they needed to support the new teachers, because we want people to stay, but we also want people to grow and learn and become successful in their classrooms for kids. And we also wanted to make sure that while these mentors, mentor, there are a lot of teachers, like me, who love teaching but want other opportunities to be teacher leaders without leaving our classrooms. And this also provides a very important function for those people who really want to give back to our profession and lend some of our expertise. I will say that mentors learn as much from mentees as the mentees learn from mentors. This isn't a case of mentors filling empty heads with lots of data. And it is a two-way street and it's a very engaging process. And it's a, oh, I'm talking too long, Katie, we'll do the next slide. I can do that, so you have to rein me in, Katie, you know. There is, it's just a win-win for mentors. You cannot help in engaging in that reflective process that Neil showed. Experienced teachers continually engaging in that process, it's just a win-win. I always like to say you cannot just phone it in when you're mentoring, because everyone's watching you. And we are role models and we are expected to practice what we preach. And I think it's a win-win for all. Some of the ways that we are supportive over the past 10 years, first of all, there are very few teachers in the state who serve in my role. Avon has one and we don't know any others, because most-
Usually people who will serve in my role or Erin's role, who are the district facilitators. So the fact that we commit a portion of a teacher's schedule is important.
It's very significant.
Erin and I are very grateful for that.
As are we. It's very significant that this mentoring and new teacher support isn't like Erin or Neil or Sue's or Matt's 500th task on their list that day. So it really, really has been important. And the central administration always receives kudos from me for being so supportive. We have a TEAM TEAM. There are five of us, two elementary representatives, and then a middle school representative and then another high school representative along with me, so that hopefully we can be more responsive to the needs of all of the levels and all of the issues. Believe it or not, the second one up there sounds like a no-brainer, but in many districts this doesn't happen. We do everything, thanks to Cindy Frelinger and Neil, matching mentors and mentees in the same discipline, in the same building. That sounds, that sounds like nothing, but nothing could be more important. Even though we're talking about best practices in teaching, teachers want to talk about Spanish with another teacher. Teachers want to talk about, I'll say math, with another teacher. It's really very important and that has been one of the keystones of our success, I think. We plan, it's a very hands-on program. We are, we meet together in August, orientation. September, we start to talk about goal planning. As the year goes on, we meet monthly. We have instituted a process where each new teacher must meet in a separate meeting, face-to-face, with a building principal to discuss goals. We thought that that mattered for both principal and beginning teacher, so that all would be aware of the challenges being faced and what support was necessary. We have provided all sorts of references and resources, including a monthly calendar of activities for mentors in case they're at which end of how to help. We celebrate, that's my favorite part. Everyone gets invited, mentors and mentees and administrators and principals to team celebrations a year that the SEA helps to sponsor. These are just a few things of what we do.
And I'll just add on the face-to-face meeting with the building principal. It's actually separate from the evaluation process. So first and second year teachers being evaluated, but this meeting is about your goal-setting around this process, and it happens with your mentor and the principal as well. So it's actually meant to be much more as this is, we're in a supportive building skills mode than we are in an evaluative mode right now.
That's very, very important.
So the next slide is a little bit about what's happened with the state budget, and Jan told me she would not talk in any way about the money, so I had to take this slide. So what happened is, as the budget passed for this year, and many legislators didn't even realize it, all funding for TEAM was out. So the state had, much of what used to happen at the state level was de facto passed to the districts. And Jan had to attend the district facilitator meetings at that time, really unsure of what was going to happen. And basically with them saying to districts, you're still responsible to do all of this, we just aren't offering the support we used to offer with personnel at the state level, with some of the funding that used to come from the state level, and some of the sources and structures that supported the program. So even though the funding was eliminated, districts are still responsible to match mentees and train mentors. That part has stayed the same. But the second bullet, and it's in red to show that this was an impact, we used to receive a $500 reimbursement for each mentor from the state. So on an average year, that could look like about $10,000, because we would have 20 mentors and the stipend was attached. We would pay them through the SEA contract agreement, but then Burke would get a check back from the state in the summer saying, that is not coming. And that, so sometimes when people talk about unfunded mandates, it's in the murkiness of this involves more work. This is a straight, they shut off the money and it's not coming and districts are just expected to pick it up. And we will be doing that. Obviously, the module process has continued, but what used to happen when you determined the success of a module, a teacher turned their reflection paper into this system in the state. It was read anonymously by trained readers at the state and somebody approved it or said it still needed more work. That entire system was also shut off without notice, that we were, there was not going to be any ability to submit papers to the state anymore. And also then, therefore to attest that teachers had successfully completed that, is now much more on the district to say each module has been completed. So upon receiving that news without a lot of clarification, the TEAM TEAM that Jan talked about, along with Erin and I, held a series of meetings to say, let's not worry about what the state's going to do. What is Simsbury going to do to solve this problem? And then Jan's going to pick it up again, because I think we came up with a pretty good solution.
We reassured mentors and mentees that what they were doing would not change. They would still continue to meet and talk about goals and reaching them and what was happening in their classroom and sharing experiences. But now we had to come up with a way to evaluate the success of this reflective cycle. So we decided, most people learn so much from sharing with each other, that we would try out a series of, in small groups, a series of guided reflective workshops. So we invited small groups of beginning teachers with me and with one of my teammates. And we asked them to come, ready to talk about some of these questions up here. So what have they learned during the module preparation? How has the new learning changed their teaching? Most importantly, how has this new learning and changes in instruction impacted their kids? How do they know? That's one of the things that we work a lot at in helping them be able to articulate how they know that changes are impacting their kids. And then, because I believe in positivity, dogs are otherwise, what do I need to do to make it continue to go well? Focusing on the positive, identifying what is it that's happening, that's going well in the classroom, and what do I need to do to continue that? So we met four small groups, again-
Half-day session.
Yes, again, a sign of support. They provided release time for these teachers. And we asked for feedback and we think that there's one answer that will just kind of encapsulate, we think the success of this, because we're planning to do this again in May, based on their responses. They were really engaging, enriching conversations. I had so much fun over two days, it's impossible to not be moved and go back excited into your classroom the next day. This comment was about the disadvantages of documenting your reflections on paper. So she, he or she wrote, "There is a lack of otherness when writing a paper to be viewed by one person that is then approved or denied. By that I mean that other people's ideas and experiences can be infinitely more valuable to your own reflection process. Just being reminded that you are not doing all this alone, even with a supportive mentor, makes it better. The discussions today made me feel more comfortable with my own experiences reflection process, and I honestly just loved hearing how other people are doing in their second year of teaching." That was representative of their reactions.
You got through it without tearing up.
I know.
It was good.
Some of these verbs, though, are great. Complete uncertainty at the state level. We know nothing right now, nothing about the future of this program. But we are remaining committed to new teachers growing together with their mentors and mentors growing together with their new teachers, as well as, Neil added that innovative PD to my, I hope it's innovative. We will continue to deliver innovative PD to support our mission. We're not sure what that is right now, but we're going to continue to grow and learn along with them.
Right. Well, I said it was innovative, because after we did a facilitated discussion to get through the fall modules, I just noticed that Krec added on to their professional development that they're going to do a facilitated discussion for the next module, so I think word spreads. So Jan talked about her TEAM TEAM. I just want to publicly, by name, recognize-
Oh, I'm sorry.
The others besides Jan, who is our facilitator. The other master mentors in our district, which takes an extra level of training, are Sharon Cabell at Squadron Line, Paige Collantonio at Central School, Laurel Archimbo at Henry James, and Rob Jeffers of the high school. So those are the members of the TEAM TEAM, along with Jan, myself, definitely Erin, who contributes a lot to this process, but I got chosen to be at the table tonight. So that's our presentation. Any questions or-
I would just say this, thank you very much to both of you for putting it together. And I would say that we always talk about how difficult and challenging it can be to create and sustain excellence in your organization. And we know finding top talent is crucial and then retaining that top talent, which Jan talked about at the beginning of the presentation, is absolutely essential. I couldn't be more comfortable than your leadership, Jan, than anybody. I remember when I was in HR and we were first hatching this out, you, myself, and Erin, and working through, and it's come along in such a productive way. You're an amazing teacher leader, you're a positive force to not only the kids, but the adults in this district. So this is something we're real proud of and wanted to put it out front in the board tonight. And I know they'll answer any questions that you do have.
He's just still trying to make you cry, sorry. He's just still trying to make you cry, sorry.
It's not too hard.
I just, I was just going to say, I just so appreciate that at the heart of this, we're really looking to make those new teachers really feel a part of something bigger and not lost in a classroom on their own. And the commitment to continuing this is admirable. And I appreciate all the hard work you're all doing to make sure that it happens well and that these new teachers continue to get supported, because it's, I think it can be really daunting.
It certainly can be.
It's a hard profession.
It is hard, yeah.
Sounds like, you know, talk about unfunded mandates and a lot of them are just, oh my gosh, but this is one that if it was not mandated, it sounds like it's something we would definitely keep, and it's money well spent.
And I think the superintendent's organization is really going to push in effort to get that, at least that reimbursement back, because that, I think that, you know, a big piece of fiscal legislation passes and people don't know everything that's in the soup. And when they turned around and said that got cut, I think a lot of superintendents were caught by surprise.
Correct.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, ask a question about the modules themselves, because the first question that came to my mind before you got into the presentation was whether or not we created these modules ourselves and are the mentors all using the same materials or does each mentor decide what to do? But I take from the presentation that everyone's using the same modules, is that correct?
Yes.
So there's consistency across every mentor?
Yes, and part of the way we organized it in Simsbury too, because we had the freedom to organize it the way we wanted. We decided a long time ago that we would have year one teachers do classroom environment together with, along with planning, so that they, as a group, would have each other for support as well, the mentors and new teachers. And then the same second year, they would work together so that there would be all sorts of ripples in the water, we hoped, that would be helping each other. But yes, it's a very structured, based on that connect-
It is structured and used consistently, but then a related question really is, do, have you had, have you and your team had the flexibility to modify these modules to improve them, to change them, to customize them for our own needs here in Sims- them, to change them, to customize them for our own needs here in Simsbury, or not?
This, actually, this program, one of the advantages of this over best is that there is a lot of flexibility.
Oh.
There is, there is a continuum of effective teaching and each teacher looks at it and chooses an area in which they feel they would like to grow.
Oh.
So it's, while it's structured, there is lots of room for individual choice and growth. And that's one of the positives, that we work to make sure that this is relevant and real to each teacher in his or her classroom, that each teacher's working on what he or she feels is necessary for him or her and his or her kids.
And also, I'm sorry to be so lengthy about this, but this is really, really important. I just wanted to ask the question, and it might not be a fair question in this environment, but the whole intent of this is to, is to, is to have excellence in the classroom. And you've mentioned the idea of teacher retention as a very, very important objective of this program. I didn't even know it existed and I'm really impressed with it. But do we have a metric about retention? I mean.
It's something we.
In fact, have we measured retention?
Yeah, we do. And I should have brought some data for you, but I'll bring you something for the next meeting. It's something we review at our, we have two meetings a year where Erin and I go out with the team. And just last year, they said, could you bring us some teacher retention data? And we looked at the reasons why every teacher who did leave Simsbury, could we name the specific reason why they left? And we went literally teacher by teacher and talked about, you know, the good news is, the percentage was much higher of those who stayed, but we actually did an analysis of any who did leave either the district or the profession, why that was.
Yeah, I really don't want to make any extra work for anybody, but to, you know, actually just get some sense for how we're doing on retention wouldn't be a bad idea.
No, and it's very important.
Okay.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming and talking to us.
Oh, my pleasure. Anyhow.
Wonderful.
And thanks for showering us with your enthusiasm, Jan.
Easy, it's easy.
It is easy. It's wonderful working with Jan. She is.
Teacher of the year?
Yes, teacher of the, she has been, and just a wonderful role model for our teachers in the district. And so it's been great working with her.
Erin, do they do this program for teachers that start a new grade but are existing? Or is it just for teachers like out of class or?
It's their first two years of teaching. We have actually a model within Simsbury where we do assist teachers through some of our coaches and resource teachers to help teachers that move grade levels. So we do, we do focus on that. We also do hire people coming in in their second year who have to get into the team process as well. So that's the other piece that we were a little bit worried about when we heard about this, is that how are we going to know what people have accomplished if there is no longer that database? So it's just word of mouth and contact with the districts from which they come from. But it does have a direct tie to their certification and we think it's, it's been such a positive program, so it's been fun to work with Jan.
Excellent. Really wonderful.
Yep.
We're going to move on now to the, to Mrs. Murphy as well.
Okay.
Update on the school's start time.
All right, so.
I would just say to kind of tee this up, this is a, this is a brief presentation, really much more about process tonight than it is about outcome. So I just want to be clear on that. Erin's going to give us an overview of some of the meetings that have taken place in the study group that, leadership team that has taken this topic on. It's a topic certainly that I know has garnered a lot of board interest, as well as community and faculty interest. So we do have some, some key data to share at this point, but again, it's much more about process and the outcome later on in the year will be a much more detailed and in-depth report.
So this topic came up following last year's leadership team meeting on stress and kids and the committee members began to talk about school start time. So we thought this was a good topic to bring to this year's committee and we expanded the committee. It's a comprehensive K-12 committee where it has administrators from the high school, the middle school, the elementary schools. We have students from the middle school, we have students from the high school, parents, teachers from both the middle school and the high school, and our board members were Susan and Todd that have been part of this. And again, as Matt said, this has certainly been an exploratory year for us to try to figure out what we need to know about rethinking school start times. So our goal really has been to identify the potential benefits and questions that would be associated with moving school start times later in the morning for our middle and for our high school. And we're not alone in this process. We've been working, I've been working very closely with two other colleagues, one from West Hartford and one from South Windsor, and they are both in the exploratory mode as well. West Hartford, a little bit ahead of us, we're in the middle, and South Windsor behind. And so we get together about every month to talk about the work that's going on in their districts. Other districts in Connecticut that have already altered their school times, Greenwich, Newtown, Wilton, Ridgefield just voted, their Board of Education just voted, that they will implement a new school start time in the start of the 2019-20 school year. Another district that we got connected with that has a very similar profile to us in Simsbury is Newton, Mass. And very much excited about learning more about their work as well. They have, they're larger than us, they have two, two high schools in Newton, Mass. We also have had the opportunity, a student teacher that worked with Brent Betty at the high school is finished up the first semester and the second semester is working as an intern. And she's doing a lot of research for us. She's gone out and collected data on school start times for our DURGs and in various places around Connecticut, and she's reaching out to other districts as well. But she connected with Newtown and the principal at Newtown High School is open to putting a panel of students together and for us to come down and talk with them about the work. And hopefully, we could potentially get some teachers as well that we could do. So we're looking forward to that. So very fortunate to have her to be able to pull that information together. So as an overview of the work that we've done since September, we started by looking at research. We pulled about five or six different articles that we passed out to various members within the committee. And we also worked on creating a survey. And I think the important part, when you see the survey data and when you're thinking about the survey data, when we created it, we were really looking at creating some baseline data. We had not given out information, we had not really schooled people in what it meant to change school start times. We really wanted to get just information, opinions, perceptions from families, from students, and from teachers about this notion of changing the school's start time. So we started in September. In November, we went through and our ultimate goal, as I had said a few minutes ago, is to really identify those benefits and questions, and the list is growing as we're meeting. We keep adding to that list. In January, we had Dr. Daniel McNally, who came from UConn, a sleep expert, and we had about 25 or 30 people in the audience that evening. So it was great, and I'll have some information I can share with you on that. In January, the end of January, we heard from Jeff Penny, our athletic director, who gave us some information on athletics and extracurriculars. And we reviewed the schools, the survey data at that point. In March, on March 29th, Neil has been working, I think, since the beginning of the school year, looking at our transportation, a very complex, you know, explorer, exploration of how we've used our transportation in the past and what it could or might look like. So we're all waited, waiting with bated breath to see what that information is going to give to us. We have no idea what to expect.
Pressure just increased.
Yeah, really. Neil, maybe you should go down.
And then in May, the committee will work to pull together the, the list of benefits and questions that we will want to present to you. And potentially, once we know what the bus runs could be, we might even propose some schedules that we could even be thinking about at that point in time. So just to give you some big ideas of what we've gathered so far in this school year, the research certainly says that the most influential benefit of a later start time for adolescents is their health and well-being. So something that, any article that you read on this, whether it's through the American Pediatric Association, the Center for Disease Control, says that during this adolescent development period, that you will see some increase in academic performance, less auto accidents, less tardiness, that more sleep for students is extremely beneficial. And it, not only does it provide them more sleep, but certainly adds to a positive culture within the building and certainly decreases the tardinesses, tardiness that can occur. So Dr. McNally gave us a great opening of about 20, 25 minutes of just really the medical aspects behind sleep for adolescents and then opened it up to questions. And it was a very engaging conversation. So again, he supported that through his research and his work in this field, is that there is evidence that supports better academic outcomes and that attendance improves. That the change for the students is, it was interesting as he talked about the circadian rhythm and the ways in which students, as we all go through these developmental stages, that people tend to think that you're automatically just going to push everything later in the night and go to sleep later. And he was saying that that's not actually the case, that you typically will stay with your same bedtime and get about 52 extra minutes of sleep a night. And so that was interesting, someone had posed that question.
Starting to sound pretty good, isn't it?
He actually talked to us about, and it was a football coach, and I believe it was in Wisconsin or Minnesota area. And again, sports is, when we heard from Jeff Penny, there are certainly some areas that we have to think long and hard about. There's, there's real issues that, that can present challenges to us. But he talked about a football coach who was very much against, adamant against changing the start times, couldn't imagine how practice times could be shortened or just couldn't imagine how this would work. And probably, he said, four to six weeks into the season, came back and said, I can get so much more done in a shorter time period of practice than we could before because the focus of these students is so much better. So that was, people pushed him on that in the, in the questions. And he, you know, as he said, clearly, the, the sleep time for these students that, you know, from middle school through high school, seven and a half to eight and a half hours of sleep is what's most important. And it's not simply that you could, you know, what some people think is that you can sleep six or seven hours a night throughout the week, and on the weekend, you could sleep 10 or 12 hours. How many of us have, you know, at noon time, you know, trying to get our kids out of bed? And he's saying, you know, that's really not ideal. It's not ideal for any of us, that we should be, you know, trying to stay as consistent with our bedtimes and our times that we get up, that you can't make up your sleep on the weekends. You might feel better at the moment, but it doesn't help. And obviously, more sleep, you know, certainly helps students overall in their health and their well-being. So as we go into some of these survey results, I'll talk a little bit, just give you an idea. We had 1,157 families respond to the survey. We had.
Is that a record?
I think so.
Beat out the calendar survey.
I'm not sure about that. A lot of opinions on the calendar.
We had 1,245 students. They were a very captive audience, so that's why we did get, we did eighth grade through, and then ninth through 12th grade. And teachers and faculty, 400 teachers and faculty that responded. And as I said, this again was a baseline. This was a way for that we could get information and know what we might need to give more information and be able to help people understand why, what the research says, and so on. So again, looking to gather that baseline data is really about their opinions, their perceptions, and their personal impact that you'll see. So you'll get some of this as we look at this first result, survey result, so that you can see those in favor of a later start time are the parents. 71% of our parents said that they would prefer, and this was elementary, middle, and high school families that responded to this. Our middle school and high school teachers are at 47%, and our students are at 40, about 40% in favor. And again, it's interesting. We need to dig more deeper into the data and we need to do more teaching and gathering information, some sessions with, with people as well.
But these data are from, before the parents and before the teachers and before the students were made aware of all this research?
Correct. We haven't done any teaching per se in that regard. And we purposely chose that because we wanted to get a sense of what it, a lot of the information that we gathered back, for example, the teachers, most, when you look at the faculty and staff, it was really about their childcare issues. It was about, when you think about, you know, you're going to change my time of day.
Change, yeah.
So childcare and elder care types of things, gym memberships, a lot, that came up a lot for people that, that go in the afternoon. So those are things that we have to continue to flush through. Parents, they said that their point of view on the benefit is that 74% that, you know, the kids would sleep later, that that would, they would definitely get much more sleep, they'd be more focused, and that it would reduce stress on students with a later start When we look at what the teachers said, and this is where you can see where they were talking about themselves, but they also talked about students, is that they were worried that it would push back their extracurricular and their sports activities later in the day, which would then cause homework to be an issue as well, that students would miss class. And I, that's what we heard, and I'll talk about it in a minute, with athletics, that if we push it later in the day, buses have to leave, they have to get students to other communities in which to participate in sports, they could be missing some school time. And that's, teachers were worried about that. They thought that they would stay up later and thought that they might not have time to be able to hold down a job after school. But what we do know, 58% of our students said that they don't work. So that was another data point that we had. But when we, one of the questions from the teachers is that 63% of the teachers indicated that a later start time certainly would allow the, the students to get more rest. And some of the things that they said about students in the first period is that they're groggy, they don't participate as freely, and a lot of tardiness in first period. So they see that as well. Some student responses when they look at this, when they were, you know, the number of students that get up, 52% of our students are up before 6:00 a.m. in the morning. So that's an early time that, that students are getting up. Most of our students, 61% of our students are going to bed by 11 o'clock at night. Homework, and this is a sort of a byproduct of this work that we're looking into. 68% of our students have at least three, three hours of homework a night. We do have some data where we can look at our high school separately from the middle school, 74% of our high school students say that they have at one to four hours of homework a night. So it's interesting information, and I think that's an area that we're going to have to pay some attention to.
And we do know, getting into this and your conversation, I don't want to jump in, but your conversations with other districts.
Yes.
Some of the advice we had was, the conversation about school start time should parallel the conversation about homework, in terms of stressors and management of, of things that are really have an impact on kids' lives. So it's interesting data.
That was in our book, too.
Right.
Just saying.
And when asking students.
Teachers pack.
Teachers pack.
I was in the first four chapters.
It is.
Good for you.
And when students were asked why they're tardy, because that tended to be a, a big response, is because they oversleep. 50% of our kids say they, they are tardy to school because they oversleep. When we look at the athletics and the extracurricular report, one of the pie chart at the top, it's, it shows you that in, for high school students, in the fall, we have 43% of our students participate in a fall sport, 30% in a winter sport, and 52% in a spring sport. That makes a lot of sense. Fall, you know, is, is a, is a larger time. Winter, teams are smaller and not as many, but springtime, we have a lot of sports that go out. 30% of our high school students do not participate in a sport. But what you can see from this is that what we, when we found a couple of articles regarding athletics, is that performance measurably increases with additional sleep, that there's increases in GPA, in standardized test scores, all of those kinds of things that we've talked about already were supported in the literature regarding the athletics and extracurricular. One of the things that we came upon in our study on this is that what, what we do know about kids, a lot of football kids and other sports, where not only do they have to have the practice, but there is a strength and conditioning component to their day, so they have to do that maybe for an hour and then go off for practice as well, is that we might be able to look at some curricular opportunities and embed strength and conditioning within the school day. So add it to our P E program so that it wouldn't add to extra time after. So that was a benefit that the committee thought we should, we should. So that was a benefit that the committee thought we should, we should look at. When you look at the questions, this is not a surprise, our availability of facilities, we've been talking about that a lot. So the way in which we currently operate, we have difficulty, we have one field with lights, and we've been talking about another field at the high school, so something to be thinking about. The coordination of schedules, academic and athletic, the CIAC sports, they have a general start time of all sports after school as 3:45. So depending on your time of day, could certainly impede upon that start time. The loss of instructional time, we talked about that, that's a worry. We also have coaches, teachers that are coaches within the system, that would end up having to leave their classes to get on the bus and go with the sport. So that's of concern. And then transportation, without knowing what the transportation report is yet, but, you know, you'd have to juggle, you know, transportation at the end of the day and trying to make sure you, you didn't, that you had enough of, of busing for that. So as we learn more, as we go through the remainder of our meetings, we will let this list of potential benefits and questions, you know, come together, and we will be prepared to present that to you in June, to give you a little bit more depth and detail around what we've been looking at over the course of the school year. So what a change might look like, we don't know. We don't know what that will be, but we'll be better prepared in June to give you more information. And as I said earlier, I'd like to maybe be able to give you a couple of different schedules that if this is something that we, that you wanted us to explore further, that we could even look at those as well.
I mean, that transportation piece is just so key in creating options-
Yeah.
-because we have a very unique three-tiered run right now. I won't get into the complexities of it.
Right.
But that's a-
Something we have to look at.
Big piece to look at.
Neil looks very excited about-
He's digging into it. He likes this stuff.
Some districts, some districts, I know West Hartford came out with some alternative times. I think that was something within our surveys that was difficult for teachers because there was, we never said, we just said, what would it look like with a 30-minute late start? What would it look like with a 60-minute late start? And there was this assumption that then you would then just flip elementary, and what would that mean? We didn't, we didn't give any clarification on that at this point yet. But, so more, more information on that. So we'll come back to you in June and give you further information that we have, and we would be looking for you to give us guidance on what the next steps should be as we move forward. If it was something that, this is what we shared with our committee, is that through this year of exploration, if the Board of Education would like us to continue exploring this, we would use another full year of exploration for you to be able to bring back to you much more detailed information. So we wouldn't even be looking at an implementation, implementation until 2019, 2020.
And with the four, well, the four, well, five now with Ridgefield, was there a consistency of what they pushed the times back to?
So interesting, Newtown went to 8:00, Greenwich went to 8:30, Ridgefield's going to 8:30. So their end times of the day are closer to 3:30 at the, 3:15, 3:30.
So is that a half-hour shift or an hour shift?
An hour. When you look at the research, you know, they, they clearly say a full hour of time is what's necessary, and that's why I'm very eager to get to Newtown, to talk to them, to see what they, they chose a, a half hour. And when we looked at our data and worked with Hanover Research, who helped us with the survey data, the 30 minutes stood out much more, you know, open to people than a 60-minute, but something we have to look at.
Did Newtown, and I just don't remember, did they flip anything, or did they just adjust?
They adjusted, and I actually have, Lizzie, my data. I have it all right here. I can see if I can find Newtown, Newtown, they start at 8:00 and they're done at 2:32.
And what does their elementary do? Did she tell you that?
I don't have that right here, but I can get that for you. Greenwich is 8:30 and they go to 3:15.
But I believe Greenwich is everyone at 8:30.
The whole town.
And they have created a very unique-
Traffic issue.
Traffic issue with commuters to New York in complete gridlock.
Oh, yes.
So maybe you do learn from talking to other districts that have tried.
Because I think that, I think some of the puzzle, some of the stuff that I think I struggle with, and I think other parents will struggle with, is, it's great to look at it just from the impact of the high school, but very few people will only have kids in the high school. And so I think it has to, you have to broaden the picture a little bit. So to know what these towns that have made the switch have done-
Right.
-with their elementary schedule, and how that kind of all flows together.
And we'll get all that information. I'll make sure that we have all that information. But she's been wonderful at giving me the start times and the end times, you know, of, of similar schools, and what their periods look like throughout the day.
The full bell schedule.
But again, nothing's in stone. This is all exploratory.
All exploratory.
We're just trying to gather information.
Sure.
But if you have questions, by all means, I'm sure Aaron will be happy to hear. But it's, 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 I think it's impressive that you've done as much as you have in the short period of time that you've been working on this.
And I think it's great, the network Aaron has formed with these other districts that are taking a look at this as well. And I can tell you, in my conversation with superintendents, there's many other districts watching to see what the outcome will be of the three or four districts that are in the conversation.
Exactly.
Very interesting. Thank you so much. Anyone have any other questions? Rupert? Isabel, any ideas? Did you do your survey?
I did do my survey. Well, as someone who goes to bed late, I would say I probably get anywhere from, on average, probably only six hours to sometimes five and a half.
Oh, wow.
And then I have, yeah, typically, two to three hours of homework. Just from a student perspective, I know there are a bunch of logistics to it and a lot to work out, but I can like attest, I had a first free last year, and that meant me getting up an hour later than I typically did, and I always felt more refreshed, ready to go. There's always times this year where I'm like kind of out of focus, and like I'm dozing off. And there might, this might be hyperbole, but none of my friends are morning people. It's the age. This year, I have AP Lit Period I, and I can say that typically, half the class is tardy on any given day, and the focus is really not there. So just from a student perspective, I know there's so much that goes into it, but I would think it would be beneficial on a lot of-
Thank you for your feedback.
That's very impressive, helpful. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to Mr. Leclerc.
Okay. 2016-17 audit report. I know that-
Not nearly as exciting, I'm sorry.
We look forward to this brief report. It's only a two-page summary of a very comprehensive document, the comprehensive annual financial report that the Town Finance Office puts together every year in work, in, working in consultation with Bloom Shapiro, the town's auditor. So we've just put together this, the snapshot exhibit for you. It was a, a very positive year overall, and in, on a general fund basis, we were about $13.5 million on July 1st, 2016, and a little over $14.2 million on June 30th, 2017. A little bit farther down the page, you see that there were, there was a committed balance of $385,000, and then a signed balance of a hun, of a little over $1.5 million. So that, that comes off the top of that general fund balance, leaving an unassigned general fund balance available July 1st, 2017, of just over $12.2 million. That committed reference, the $385,000, that is committed to the non-lapsing account. Okay? And in terms of the, the Board of Edu, the Board of Education contribution to the operating budget surplus, $16,250 from the public school budget and $3,586 from the non-public school budget. Flipping to the second page of the exhibit, we also look at a year-over-year balance of our capital non-recurring reserve, and you see that there were more expenditures than revenues, so we're down to about $735,000 there. So the auditing firm issues a management letter. They had an opportunity to present to the Board of Finance last, last week and summarize things. Definitely a very clean management letter, audit comments, and in terms of the, the two that, that mentioned, the Board of Ed and the, and the town is, is part of each of these, these are follow-up comments, that we, they still like, like us to keep working on an accounting procedures manual for all of the processes within the financial functions, and so the town and Board of Education are keeping, working on that project. And then a fraud risk assessment has been recommended by Bloom Shapiro for the town and Board of Education, and that is something that, there was funding in this current year, 17, 18 capital budget for, for this and, and some other financial security items. So we'll be working with the town of Simsbury to, to hire a firm to come in and do some sort of fraud risk assessment. And I just want to, as I, as I always try to, to do, is to give my thanks to the Board of Ed accountant, Kira Sheehan, in my office, because we, we all joke about how budget season seems to go so, so long, we're starting one budget, ending, ending the other. The audit season is, is a bit like that also. The auditors come in, do preliminary work in, in May, and then come back and do their fieldwork in October, November, but the actual audit doesn't get issued until December, or in this case, late January. And Kira is constantly interfacing, giving them data, and just does an excellent job. So I just want to give her my thanks.
We all want to thank her. Please tell her tomorrow when you see her.
I will do that.
That we are very thankful for all the work she does, and appreciate all, having the numbers in place when we need them. Anyone have any questions?
Well, yeah, you had mentioned two things that the auditors want us to work on, and one is we probably get a consultant to do a report on fraud. That accounting procedure manual, as I recall, that, that was, same recommendation was made last year as well.
Correct.
And possibly the year before that.
Yeah, it's, and so, and so this is, right.
And I'm wondering, is, are we, are we going to have to finally buckle down and do that, or can we hire somebody to do it for us?
Yeah. In terms of the, of this accounting procedures manual, I wish I could characterize the way the auditor talked about it la, last week at the Board of Finance. I mean, this is the, this is the ideal that they'd like to see, so that if somebody leaves, you have this manual on the shelf to kind of come in and see whatever, you know, what each detailed procedure is. I know that from our payroll team, they have made a lot of progress in putting together procedures that were never written down over the past year, because we've had a change in, in staffing there. So it is sort of a continual work in, in progress. Progress is being made. They are not upset that it's not, that there's not this final product. They're, they're saying this is a really good thing to keep, you know, keep focus on.
Continue to make progress.
Yes.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much. While we, while we're talking about budget and our season, I just want to go over our dates that we, they're all on the front page of your books that you have at home. But so March 13th is our Board of Education budget presentation to the Board of Finance, and that will be at 6:00 p.m. downstairs in the main, main room. April 5th will be the Board of Finance public hearing on the capital and operation, operating budgets at 6:00 p.m. at the SHS Amphitheater. April 24th will be the Board of Finance final public hearing at 5:45 at the Town Hall. And May 15th, the budget referendum will be at Henry James for everyone in town to vote.
And those are still tentative, but that is the intended schedule.
As we get closer, I figure they're closer to be aligned, but-
That the Board of Finance is still, is still, you know, looking to-
They could change, but as far as right now, as we do have these things in, in sites.
The 13th is for sure.
13th is for sure. Okay. We have public audience available to us again. Anyone have anything they want to share? Chris, it's nice to see you. We will be heading into executive session to discuss evaluation of our superintendent, and so this meeting will be moving, and we will see us at downstairs, March 13th, for anyone watching.
We're up one against Windsor with 40 seconds left.
Does that mean we go into executive session?
Thank you. Second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Is that girls?
Boys.
We're moving into executive session.
Can he smell the girl asleep?
I think she has lost a couple words.